Welcome to the October 23, 2025 Parma City School District Board of Education Meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. It will be led today by the Green Valley Service Crew. Superman, Portion.
Guys, turn around.
Turn around, guys. Flag over here. All right, ready? We'll start on you. Ready?
Aye. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Turn around.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome to stay for the whole meeting, but you don't have. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Mr. Lucio.
Mr. Kohar.
Present.
Mr. Kupit.
Present.
Mr. Ruda.
Present.
Dr. Hunt, can you please confirm this meeting has currently been live streaming?
It is.
Can you please monitor the live streaming throughout the meeting? And if there's a problem, please pick up immediately so that technical difficulty can be addressed.
I will.
I have moved to adopt Resolution 2025-10-472, approval of the board meeting agenda.
Second.
We have motion in a second to adopt Resolution 2025-10-472. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Ms. Kohar.
Yes.
Mr. Kupit.
Present.
Resolution 2025-10-472 has been approved. Information to the board, Dr. Hunt.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. First, at 5 o'clock, we held a ribbon cutting for our two brand-new career tech ed spaces in auto collision and carpentry back here at Normandy High School. Very well attended by some staff, some students, community partners. So, nice event to commemorate and open those spaces. If you have an opportunity, they look outstanding. So, if you have an opportunity to get to see them, if you didn't get to see them tonight, please make an appointment and do so. Second thing, this Friday, tomorrow, Battle of Parma, Normandy High School versus Valley Forge. This is also the evening of our kindergarten and seniors walk. We have our kindergarteners and our senior students at Byers Field, and they will walk to meet in the middle of the field. It's a tradition, I believe, that was started last year, and we're going to continue to do that so that everyone has the opportunity to see our kindergarteners and that progression and that journey until being a senior at our high schools. On, for the next boarding on the 6th, I want to schedule a work session. We can be flexible with time. 5:15 probably works, 45 minutes to share with you the considerations of the Burns Van Fleet, which are the consultants that produced the transition plan and audit. I sent an email earlier today. You have that report. What I hope to do is talk through those considerations with the board, get some input and feedback so that we can talk about what items we might be able to implement. And Steve, I know you have a proclamation, so I'm going to turn it over to you if you want to share that.
Absolutely. At a council meeting the other day at Parma Heights, we had a proclamation from the mayor in Parma Heights about support for our levy. So, I have that here. Present it, and I will present that to Dr. Hunt. I'll pass that down.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mayor Gallow, and your council for the support of the levy. And not to be remiss, but we did have Parma did it. You're in attendance for that one. So, it was very nice. We have a lot of support. Have we heard from our friends in Seven Hills?
They're also supporting. I mean, I don't know if they passed anything at council, but they certainly have expressed their support.
Awesome. So, three citywide support of our levy. That's outstanding.
That's all I have.
That's it. Okay, thank you, sir. Communications, board members, anything?
I do not.
Pressure?
Yeah, I do have an update. Last week, I did my five-year forecast presentation, and I had mentioned that we have three emergency levies totaling like $40 million. They're expiring in '30, '31, '32. Oh, sorry, '30, '31, '34. And once they expire, we just have to pass a regular operating levy. There's a bill that was passed yesterday, House Bill 186. It was passed in the House, not the Senate yet.
Welcome to the October 23, 2025 Parma City School District Board of Education meeting. Please stand for the pledge allegiance. It will be led today by the Green Valley Service Crew. Alright, ready? We'll start on you. Ready?
Aye. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome to stay for the whole meeting, but you don't have. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Mr. Lucio.
Ms. Kohar.
Present.
Ms. Kupit.
Present.
Ms. McTaggart.
Present.
Mr. Ruda.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present. Dr. Hunt, can you please confirm this meeting has currently been live streaming?
It is.
Can you please monitor the live streaming throughout the meeting? And if there's a problem, please speak up immediately so that technical difficulty can be addressed.
I will.
I move to adopt Resolution 2025-10-472, approval of the board meeting agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2025-10-472. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Ms. Kohar.
Yes.
Ms. Kupit.
Yes.
Ms. McTaggart.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-10-472 has been approved. Information to the board, Dr. Hunt.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. First, at 5 o'clock, we held a ribbon cutting for our two brand-new career tech ed spaces in auto collision and carpentry back here at Normandy High School, very well attended by some staff, some students, community partners. So, a nice event to commemorate and open those spaces. If you have an opportunity, they look outstanding. So, if you have an opportunity to get to see them, if you didn't get to see them tonight, please make an appointment and do so. Second thing, this Friday, tomorrow, Battle of Parma. Normandy High School versus Valley Forge. This is also the evening of our kindergarten and seniors' walk. We have our kindergarteners and our senior students at Byers Field, and they will walk to meet in the middle of the field. It's a tradition, I believe. It was started last year, and we're going to continue to do that so that everyone has the opportunity to see our kindergarteners and that progression and that journey until being a senior at our high schools. On, for the next morning on the 6th, I want to schedule a work session. We can be flexible with time. 5:15 will probably work 45 minutes to share with you the considerations of the Burns Van Fleet, which are the consultants that produced the transition plan and audit. I sent an email earlier today. You have that report. What I hope to do is talk through those considerations with the board, get some input and feedback so that we can talk about what items we might be able to implement. And Steve, I know you have a proclamation, so I'm going to turn it over to you if you want to share that.
Absolutely. At a council meeting the other day at Parma Heights, we got a proclamation from the mayor in Parma Heights about support for our levy. So, I have that here, present it, and I'll present that to Dr. Hunt. I'll pass that down.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mayor Gallow, and your council for the support of the levy. And not to be missed, but we did have, Parma did it. You were in attendance for that one. So, it was very nice. We have a lot of support. Have we heard from our friends in Seven Hills?
They're also supporting. I don't know if they passed anything at council, but they certainly have expressed their support.
Awesome. So, three citywide support of our levy. That's outstanding.
That's all I have.
That's it. Okay, thank you, sir. Communications board members, anything? Treasure?
Yeah, I do have an update. Last week, I did my five-year forecast presentation, and I had mentioned that we have three emergency levies totaling about $40 million. They're expiring in '30, '31, '32. I'm sorry, '30, '31, '34. And once they expire, we just have to pass a regular operating levy. There's a bill that was passed yesterday, House Bill 186. It was passed in the House, not the Senate yet. It would allow for those renewed levies to go for one more renewal for a five-year period, and then they fall off. So, that needs to be voted on by the Senate, and we'll see how that goes. I figured I'd update you, because last week I said it would fall off at '33, '34, but it appears it could now be '35, '36, and '39. So, just wanted to give an update.
Thank you. Thank you. And we have a PTA council report.
Alright. Greetings from Parma Council PTA. I'm Heather Aketchev. You don't know, the council treasurer. So, this month for October, we have in our units a lot of fall festivities happening around. So, please make sure to take some time and stop at the, check out the social media pages. I know there's plenty of trunk or treats that are going on. We have a few board members that in the past have volunteered and donated candy and even helped out in the events. So, we are now full go in our PTA units. On Wednesday, October 1st, the families enjoyed an interactive circus presentation from Sky Circus at Valley Forge High School in their auditorium. We had about 300 total guests, and the kids actually, after the presentation, had a chance to try out the equipment. So, it was really fun for all and a great evening. The following units have been recognized this month by Ohio PTA for earning the Membership Welcome Back Award. Densler, First Step, Green Valley, Greenbrier, Pleasant Valley, Ridge Brook, Shiloh, Thorough Park, and Valley Forge. And then also are still eligible for the Ohio PTA Emmy Award for membership is Densler, First Step, Pleasant Valley, Ridge Brook, Shiloh, and Valley Forge. All of these are like little membership contests to help keep the PTA with, you know, recruiting new members and strengthening our voice. So, if you haven't had a chance to join any of our PTAs, please let me know, and I can get you the link. And please consider supporting us as a community member. At our October meeting, a couple weeks ago, we had Dr. Amy Zaramet give us an overview of the district report card. So, we'd like to thank her for taking time out to spend with us. Furthermore, scholarship criteria has been distributed to all of our scholarship sponsors and are due back in November. So, we are in the process of making sure that we have all the answers from 50-some sponsors with over 80-some scholarships. Don't have the full numbers, but that's usually about where we're at with that. The students will then have a presentation early December. So, we have between that time and the December to have everything put together. And at our meeting, we also collected food for the PEA food drive. And on Wednesday, October 29th, so next week, at Snow Library, we will be holding our annual fall training. And I get to do treasurer tax filing and charitable trust. Always a fun time. Love it. If you're bored, come join us. They're also going to be going over AI and CANVA. So, helping our PTA units go on to the next focus of creating fun and interesting posts versus the same old that we've always done. So, we're excited. Speaking of funds, Parma Council PTA has two fundraisers that are currently going on that do go back to our scholarship program. We have our Monster Hockey Event, which is a family night on February 28th. The tickets are $30. We also participate in their 50/50 raffle, and those funds go generated back to our scholarship program. And then we're also raffling off a four-pack of tickets with Caesar Reward Access. Those are $5, and that's online. But that would be once we will pull the winner on Black Friday, and they'll be able to contact the Monster Hockey. And once they agree on a date, they get that perk. So, and a hockey stick. That's in my house. So... Finally, winter luncheon will be held on Wednesday, December 3rd at Pazos. Invitations will be out soon, and all RSVPs will be due back to Candy Graves. We again, will have raffle baskets that will be raffled off. Those funds will also go back to our scholarship program. And finally, well, actually, finally, finally, our next Parma Council PTA meeting will be Wednesday, November 12th, and this one will be at Snow Library. So, Dr. Hunt, Snow Library, not the other library. So, sometimes we like to spice things up. That is all I have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. This brings us to public participations. Do we have any?
No.
Do we have any amendments? I move to adopt Resolution 2025-10-474, approval of the written record of the proceedings from October 14th, 2025, Special Board of Education meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2025-10-474. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Ms. Kohar.
Yes.
Ms. Kupit.
Yes.
Ms. McTaggart.
Yes.
Your resolution 2025-10-474 has been approved. This brings us to business. Mr. Ruda.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I move to adopt Resolution 2025-10-475, authorizing to dispense with competitive bidding requirements and award a contract under a cooperative purchasing program for AC compressor retrofit at Shiloh Middle School.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2025-10-475. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Ms. McTaggart.
Yes.
Ms. Kohar.
Yes.
Ms. Kupit.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2025-10-475 has been approved.
Unless another board member has something to discuss, this will conclude business.
Thank you, Mr. Ruda. This brings us to curriculum. Ms. Kupit.
I move to adopt Resolution 2025-10-476, authorizing renewal of English learner elevation data management and professional development system for the 2025-2026 school year.
Second. I'm sorry. Second.
Curriculum. Thank you. We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2025-10-476. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Kupit.
Yes.
Ms. Kohar.
Yes.
Ms. McTaggart.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2025-10-476 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2025-10-477, approval of overnight out-of-state field trip. Sixth grade, Shiloh, May 18th to 19th, 2026, Camp Christopher.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2025-10-477. Any question or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Kupit.
Yes.
Ms. Kohar.
Yes.
Ms. McTaggart.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2025-10-477 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this will conclude curriculum.
Thank you, Ms. Kupit. This brings us to finance. Ms. Kohar.
I move to adopt Resolution 2025-10-478, approval of the September 2025 financial report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2025-10-478. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Kohar.
Yes.
Ms. McTaggart.
Yes.
Ms. Kupit.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2025-10-478 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2025-10-479, supplemental appropriations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2025-10-479. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Kohar.
Yes.
Ms. McTaggart.
Yes.
Ms. Kupit.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2025-10-479 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2025-10-480, activity purpose statement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2025-10-480. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Kohar.
Yes.
Ms. McTaggart.
Yes.
Ms. Kupit.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2025-10-480 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2025-10-481, approval of contributions and donations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2025-10-481. Any questions or comments from the board? I have, I want to normal thank you and remembering the Parma City Schools with your generosity. I see the American Legion donated quite a bit of money there to each of our schools. That's outstanding. Thank you. Thank you so much for your generosity. So, roll call.
Ms. Kohar.
Yes.
Ms. McTaggart.
Yes.
Ms. Kupit.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2025-10-481 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution, excuse me, 2025-10-482, authorization to receipt reconciliation balance adjustment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2025-10-482. Any questions or comments from the board?
Could our treasurer perhaps elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, so we have Ray and Associates do our CPA firm. They do our reconciliation. And we have an audit item, or not audit, adjustments items that go back to '22 or '23. Some of them are real small, and we've been trying to clean it up, cleared some checks that should have been cleared and post receipts and try to clean up, but we're still $41,000 off. The bank is higher than our system, so money is not missing. We have more money in the bank than in our system. So, we want to make an adjust, a reconciling post to bring our system up to what the bank balance is. So, that's what that is.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Kohar.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Kupit.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2025-10-482 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything else to add, that will conclude finance.
Thank you, Ms. Kohar. Human Resources, Ms. McTaggart.
I move to adopt Resolution 2025-10-483, approval of the following certificated exhibits. Confirmation of stipend amounts, confirmation of supplemental appointments, confirmation of supplemental contracts.
Second.
We have, excuse me, we have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2025-10-483. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. McTaggart.
Yes.
Ms. Kupit.
Yes.
Ms. Kohar.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2025-10-483 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2025-10-484, acceptance of certificated retirements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2025-10-484. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. McTaggart.
Yes.
Ms. Kupit.
Yes.
Ms. Kohar.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2025-10-484 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2025-10-485, approval of the following classified exhibits. Confirmation of classified appointments, confirmation of classified replacements, acceptance of classified resignations, approval of classified non-compensated leaves of absences.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2025-10-485. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. McTaggart.
Yes.
Ms. Kupit.
Yes.
Ms. Kohar.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2025-10-485 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2025-10-486, acceptance of classified retirements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2025-10-486. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. McTaggart.
Yes.
Ms. Kupit.
Yes.
Ms. Kohar.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2025-10-486 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2025-10-487, authorization to release from employment during probationary period classified employees.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2025-10-487. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. McTaggart.
Yes.
Ms. Kupit.
Yes.
Ms. Kohar.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2025-10-487 has been approved.
Unless...
I'm sorry. Excuse me. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I believe we have someone in the audience. Rhonda Newman, are you here tonight? Didn't invite Rhonda. Rhonda's the new hire this evening. She is a mild-to-moderate intervention specialist dedicated to supporting students with diverse learning needs in an inclusive classroom environment. She's going to be serving as our educator on special assignment. The educator on special assignment assists licensed school psychologists in supporting student evaluations, interventions, and data collection. So, I just wanted to welcome Rhonda to the district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Unless another member has anything to discuss, that concludes Human Resources.
Thank you. Ms. McTaggart. This brings us to policies. Ms. Kohar.
First reading of the following revised policies. Policy 2266, nondiscrimination on the basis of sex in education programs or activities. Policy 3130, assignment and transfer. 5130, withdrawal from school. 5130, sex, personal communication devices. Policy 5200, attendance. Policy 5410, promotion, academic acceleration, placement, and retention. Policy 6830, audit. Policy 7540.02, web accessibility, content, apps, and services. And that concludes policies.
I do, I would like to mention something. I don't know, so I understand that it's the first reading. Will we receive, so Dr. Hunt, prior to you coming, Dr. Smylett had, with the revised policy, also included the old policy and highlighted the changes that were made in the policies. Will we receive that?
I'm not sure if that's in your executive content or not.
It's not this time, but...
It used to be, though.
Oh, wait.
Is it?
Well, I want to see what, hold on.
Are they marked up, though?
I don't think they're, no, they're, because I don't know what she's saying. They used to be like green and pink and stuff so that you could see what was being struck. They're just crossed, yeah, they're just crossed out.
They're just crossed out.
Yeah.
Well, that's fine. Maybe it's crossed out when we can see what the changes were.
Yeah, it's, it is in the executive content. But it doesn't look like it used to. Maybe that's why.
Yeah, they're not, they were highlighted previously, and I know in our meeting, they're highlighted as well.
Okay. We're good.
If you need the highlighted content, let me know. I'm sure we still have it.
So, any information requested by the board? Questions right into the record? We have any of those? No longer. Okay, so...
I'm sorry, one more question. So, if it's, if it's in the executive content, will it also be available to the community members?
Because the executive content?
Not in the executive content.
No, that's for the board. The executive content's for the board.
Well, that's what was just stated. It was in the executive. That's why...
But, I mean, the current policy is on our website and the policy handbook, so you could just compare the two.
Well, so this was a recommending, well, this was asked by a member of our community, and I thought that it was a really good idea that the changes that are made are highlighted.
They were doing that, so you wanted...
Okay. So, it's in the agenda available to the, to the public, then, is what I'm asking.
Changes. Would they be, would they be available? You would know that. They're up there. Yeah, proposed, yes.
So, it's not available.
Let me just clarify. You're asking for the, what is shared with the board in terms of the strike-throughs and changes because what you see here is the revision. So, in the executive content, that is for the board to see the color, code, and strikeouts we have here.
Could we make it available to the community members as well?
I don't know how, I...
It was a promise that was made prior to...
I wouldn't think it'd be an issue.
It shouldn't be an issue, I don't know.
So, we can get it on. I think it's kind of an agreement.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome. I move to adopt Resolution 2025-10-489 to adjourn this meeting.
Now, wait. Didn't you have the conference space?
You're recent, though.
Oh.
You're recent.
Oh.
So, once again, I move to adopt Resolution, Resolution 2025-10-489 to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2025-10-489. Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Ms. Kohar.
Yes.
Ms. Kupit.
Yes.
Ms. McTaggart.
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.